Board meeting of the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District. We will start, as always, with a report from our Clerk of Actions Taken in Closed Session.
The Board did nothing.
Well, thanks a lot for that. We invite you to join and to stand and join with us in invocation to be led by Trustee Milchiker, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Padberg.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to provide the education, to provide the invocation this evening. It's quite an honor. As I look around me, I see intelligent people who have the best interest of the college in their hearts. I know that we will be thoughtful and forthright in our deliberations this evening, and we will discuss the issues civilly, and we will come up with the best solutions for our incredible two colleges and new site. And I look forward to working with all of you in the future, and particularly this evening. And thank you again, and God bless you. Amen.
All right. Please join with me in honoring the flag of our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and a quick administrative note. The district recently lost physical education professor and water polo and swim coach Flip Dar. We also recently lost a student member of the swimming program whose father is a coach here. The student was Pat Moore, and I ask the Board's indulgence that we adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of Flip Dar and Pat Moore. At this point, we have a public presentation. It's the "Do or Did You Know?" presentation that we were unable to get to for technical reasons last time. Let's turn this over to the Chancellor and see if we have some more luck this time.
All right. Let's hope so. Thank you, President Wagner. We have a brief film presentation, as you said, on "Did You Know?" This is about technology revolution that is taking place around the world, and certainly it has implications for institutions of higher education. So, Madar Samir, if you would please start it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I think that originated with Trustee Fuentes. So, thank you for that, sir.
I have to give credit to a little cousin of mine down in Mexico who sent that to me. So, it's not even a local submission, but I think the Chancellor, we trade these, Raghu and I trade these back and forth as the new additions come out, and it seems like they're always upgrading it and making it more interesting. Thank you.
All right. At this point, we will move to public comments. I have one request to speak, and that is from Professor Cosgrove. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Members of the Board, Chancellor, members of the faculty and administration and guests. Three quick items. I brought a friend over here from the English Department at Berkeley University, and I've mentioned to you earlier a concern I had about the name of our room and on the outside of the building and on the inside. We have a mechanical problem. Trustees should have an apostrophe. That's what an apostrophe looks like. And he suggested you ought to call the OC Register or the LA Times and have somebody come over and take a picture. I don't want to do that. I'd like to see it changed so that when people come on this campus, they can say, "Hey, you're articulate and literate." Mr. Reagan was articulate and literate and would be offended. Second point, I want to thank you all for the consideration, time, research that you did regarding the basic aid monies that have been directed to Saddleback College. That money is desperately needed and would be put to good use. Thank you very much. And third point, on the agenda tonight, under the consent calendar, item 5.6, the grant that was given to Saddleback College regarding a number of students who will be coming from Egypt in the fall. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for those students coming to us, for students here to meet them, to exchange ideas, to maybe bridge a little bit of the problems that are caused in the world by the tensions that we see. And we hope it's one of the first of several grants. It will be a way of opening up the door to other countries that would, again, be sending students to us, and we're being paid to do it by somebody other than our own district.
Thank you, sir. We will move now to Board reports. Normally, we start with Trustee Jay. He sends his regrets and is unable to join us tonight, so the first report falls to Trustee Padberg.
No report tonight, thank you.
No report?
Well, I'm going to have to give just a brief report, and actually, what it is is I want to take just a moment to offer my kudos, my congratulations to the Chancellor. It's no secret we're in some tough budgetary times, and education appears like it will suffer some of the bigger cuts that are coming out of Sacramento. The Governor's Office has put together a conference call among educators. I think it's supposed to take place tomorrow, and our Chancellor has been invited by the Governor's Office to participate on our behalf and in part on behalf of the community colleges. So, I wanted to publicly recognize that, thank him, and say, "Good luck." It's going to be, it's going to be an interesting call, and we look forward to hearing from it, but I wanted to offer our congratulations to your involvement in that endeavor. Trustee Milchiker.
The only report I have is I recently became a life member of the Saddleback College Alumni Association, and I became a family life member. So, my entire family has taken classes here and has enjoyed the college. I'm an alumni. I got my AA degree in Spanish a few years ago, and I'm a proud member of the alumni, lifetime member of the Alumni Association, and invite others to come and join me also. Thank you.
Trustee Lang.
No report.
And Trustee Bailey.
No report.
Let me turn to the Chancellor for the Chancellor's report.
Thank you. Let me talk just briefly about the budget deal that we heard about between last evening and this morning. First of all, there were no surprises as far as the community colleges were concerned, but system-wide, apparently this budget deal, so-called the budget deal, calls for cuts of approximately, oh, very close to $1 billion, mostly in categorical programs, particularly in EOPS and DSPNS programs. Secondly, the budget deal also calls for a student fee increase from $20 to $26, and that's beginning this fall, which is interesting because our registration started last week. So, we will quickly be putting together a mechanism for this fee situation, certainly after the budget is voted on by the both houses of the legislature, in the Assembly as well as in the State Senate, and then signed by the Governor. This budget still expects about $130 million of federal stimulus funds for the community colleges. All of this is happening, interestingly, at a time when we have record unemployment, which means a lot of unemployed people returning to our colleges and also redirecting students from four-year colleges and universities since they're not getting admissions there, and also returning veterans. So, we are no exception in terms of other community colleges up and down the state in terms of experiencing the record-high enrollment in the history of community colleges. And we are still waiting for all the details on the budget. As you know, we'll be bringing the final budget to the Board next month in August for approval. I should also note that we received communication from County Assessors' Office that their office has assessed some 280,000 properties, and in most cases, the property values, since they have declined, so have the property taxes, and that will certainly have effect on our basic aid dollars. We expect them to decrease, but how much, we don't know. We are hoping to learn about that hopefully within the next week or so. Deputy Chancellor Portner and I had an opportunity to talk with the County Treasurer, Chris Street. He was kind enough to meet with us in my office about 10 days or so ago and indicated that property values will be down by about 1.2% this year. It will be down by about 5% next year and will remain so for a number of years after that. So, we are going to gather as much information as possible about the state budget, the property taxes, the basic aid, and factor all of that in preparing the final budget and bring them back to the Board for consideration and approval at the August meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we are to the Board requests for report. Let me ask, are there any written requests, Chancellor? No written requests. All right. That's all right. Any requests? All right. Very good. We have two discussion items on the agenda for tonight, and the first one deals with the foundations, and I see we have a number of members of the foundation staff and boards. We have Gary Capida from Saddleback Foundation and the Executive Director, Michelle Anstadt. I see my old friend Dave Robinson from the IVC Found, not so old, my friend Dave Robinson from the IVC Foundation, Al Tello, the Executive Director there. So, let me turn it over. Let's see. We've got Dr. Bermuda and Dr. Burnett up first. We'll start there.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's just Burnett right now. With that said, it gives me great pleasure tonight to introduce the new president of the Saddleback College Foundation, who will be making the presentation of the Year in Review for Saddleback College Foundation. And you already gave it away, Mr. President, but I'm thrilled to introduce Gary Capida, who, in addition to being president of our Board of Governors, also serves as a fantastic councilman from the city of Laguna Niguel. So, Gary, why don't you take it away? Thank you.
Thank you, President Burnett. It's my honor on behalf of the Board of Governors of the Saddleback College Foundation to present the 2008-2009 Year in Review. $259,000 in student scholarships and awards were distributed to 169 students at the May Scholarship Ceremony. Additional funds were awarded at various campus year events to 47 students, bringing the total to $300,000. This support to students makes the difference in whether or not many of them can complete their education. A $50 million matching grant was donated to the California Community Colleges by the Bernard Osher Foundation. Our own Todd Burnett, before he joined Saddleback College, worked on getting the Osher Grant established, so we owe him a huge round of applause. I just added that. This is the single largest gift to community college system and one of the largest gifts ever made to higher education. It will help with technology. It's one of the largest gifts ever made to higher education. Saddleback College has been challenged to raise $675,000 to be matched by the Bernard Osher Foundation. The Foundation is committed to raising this match over the next two years, bringing its total Osher endowment to $1.3 million. With this endowment in place, 65 students will receive a $1,000 scholarship each year in perpetuity. $170,000 out of a goal of $240,000 has been raised to complete the Veterans Memorial. A major gift of $25,000 was contributed by members of the Orange County Board of Realtors, and a total of 345 individuals and organizations have donated to this project. 16 benches were sold for $5,000 each, nine of them by local cities, including Mission Viejo, Laguna Niguel, and many surrounding cities. There's only one bench left, and I hear that's going fast, so if anyone wants to purchase that last one, there's only one left with naming rights. The Foundation also partnered with the Associated Student Government to offer this important program of 100 high-usage textbooks purchased and placed in the library, allowing numerous students the ability to borrow rather than buy books. This service will be expanded next year. Through a rigorous selection process, the Foundation awarded $1,000 to $5,000 grants to 21 different college programs and projects. Some of the projects underwritten were an innovative math online tutorial, an athletics medical transport cart, and microbiology lab equipment. The Foundation elected its officers for the 2009 tenure. Myself as President, Gary Capida, Vice President Donna Varner, who's in the audience, if you can please stand and be recognized. Second Vice President Tom Yott, Secretary Trish Kelly, and Treasurer Joe Brown. Also, four new board members were elected. Reverend Mark Whitlock of Christ Our Redeemer Church, Joyce Van Shack, who's a staff member for Mimi Walters and presently served in the Reagan administration, as many know, Jim Leach, Vice President of Cox Communications, and Mark Moschetti, President of STC Inc. Also, I'd like to give a special thanks to two of our trustees who serve on the Foundation, Nancy Padberg and John Williams. Thank you both very much. This past year, $1,337,600 was raised by the Foundation and College. $438,000, which is approximately 1/3 of the total dollars raised, supported student scholarship and awards. The planned-giving program received gifts this year of $120,000. Since the inception of the planned-giving program about five years ago, we've raised pledges of future gifts exceeding $3 million, which is phenomenal. I'm going to turn over the rest to Michelle Anstadt, and I'm sorry, I have to run, but we have our council meeting tonight starting at 7:00. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. He's a terrific president. I think we're going to have a great year. I wanted to talk just a little bit about the snapshot of what our accounts looks like. You can see that we've had actually an increase this year. It's about $60,000, which really is very good because we've had an extremely weak economy, and we've had some investment losses. So, the fact that we can actually look at an account balance that's a little higher is certainly a lot better than some of our personal accounts. The endowment increased, and part of that is for the endowment increasing and a little bit in scholarships. Campus organizations also have done very well. You can see we have a reserve of $116,000, and that's something that in case we have some hard economic times, that's a little bit of our cushion. So, that's what our accounts look like right now.
Could we go back to that slide? The previous?
There we go. Sure.
The operations, that enormous jump there. Could you tell us what the difference is there?
That's actually when I talked about the economic climate and some of the money we've lost in our investment accounts. We actually had quite a cushion, which we put in our operation account. We could have called part of that reserve also. What we've done, when some of our accounts lost money, we underwrote any losses in any of the, no campus organizations, scholarships, lost any money at all. It came out of our operations. So, you see, and that's, we still have the reserve of $116,000. So, we're still, you know, pretty solvent this year, but the amount of extra discretionary income that we can spend, our decision was to underwrite any losses anywhere in the college, but also we changed our investment policy after that. We had some emergency meetings and got out of the investments that were stocks, you know, we had some in stocks, equities. And actually, what we looked like the end of the year, we lost about, I think it was 18%, which was far better than most organizations. So, we're proud to say that nobody on campus actually saw those losses except for the Foundation. We held, the Foundation Board held a planning retreat and an executive committee meeting where they established goals for the coming year, and these are the proposed goals. One of them, of course, is scholarships, and with the two top, the $300,000 for scholarships and awards, combined with what we hope to raise for the Osher Endowment, we are pledged to raising $560,000 this year in scholarships, and that's $122,000 over what we did last year. So, that's a pretty aggressive goal, but I think with the Osher Endowment match opportunity, that's something that we look forward to doing, and I think we can do it. We want to, one of the things up there is we will complete our Veterans Memorial Project. We have about $70,000 more to go. We hope that construction will be complete by early next fall, and I think, you know, we've been raising a lot of attention with that and awareness, and I think we're doing quite well. You could see the other goals. They focus on the Board's ability to partner and outreach into the community, and that's to increase our future fundraising efforts. One of the things we're going to be focusing on is reaching our alumni. We have 500,000 alumni from Saddleback College. That's a huge number of students who have been through our doors, and we're committed this year to try to reach them because by having them reconnect with our college, I think we can, that's the way to, you know, step off and do some major fundraising. So, we're committed to doing that this year. So, on behalf of the Saddleback College Foundation, we want to thank the Board of Trustees for your continued support, and I just want to point out in all of your seats, we have left a packet, and you even have a chocolate cookie with the chocolate, with the Saddleback College Foundation on it, and we gave those to our scholarship donors. So, we hope you enjoy that and look at some of our materials. Thank you.
And Trustee Milchiker.
Thank you so much. I just want to say that I think it's, you really did an incredible job this year, considering what really terrible economy it's been all year, and so many organizations that have been, have really lost all their staff because they just can't keep going. I mean, a huge number. And in spite of this really tough fiscal times, you've continued to raise incredible scholarships and even grow, and I just think you've done a fabulous job. I also really think that the Veterans Memorial Project that's been established on Saddleback College is really an incredible thing, incredible legacy that we're leaving for our future students, and it's a place for people to sit and really reflect and reflect on how all of our veterans have given so much and given their lives to allow us to be here and have a wonderful country. And I know I myself have bought a huge brick and was able to honor my father, who was a veteran, and my in-laws, and made it real personal. So, I've talked to a lot of people, and a lot of people are really interested in that. I think we can get into a number of organizations that might really be interested in supporting that. So, I've got some ideas on that as well. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Milchiker. I will be calling you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Let's hear from the Foundation that did not give us a cookie.
Wow. Okay.
President Rockmore.
All right. Well, it's my pleasure to bring this presentation tonight, especially since the Foundation at IVC has never been more successful, and the Board itself is one of the best that we've had in its history. Tonight, the presentation will be led off by our Director of the College Foundation, Al Tello, and then, of course, it's my pleasure to introduce our new Board Chair, David Robinson, who will follow at the end of the presentation.
First of all, let me say that it's a pleasure to be here with you today. I will be calling forward Dave Robinson later to say a few words to you. I have for you our financial status, and I'm very proud to share with you that in recent years, our Foundation became a million-dollar organization. Contributions to the college include scholarships in the amount of $182,000 and in-kind donations in the amount of $57,000. Our 22nd Annual Astounding Inventions Competition, sponsored by the law firm of Greenberg Trial Rig, raised nearly $30,000. Our gymnasium at IVC was filled with hundreds of young inventors and their families. $8,400 in cash prizes was awarded to the student inventors from the Irvine and the Testan Unified School Districts. Two students were selected as grand prize winners by Greenberg Trial Rig for an opportunity to have a patent placed on their invention, potentially worth $10,000 in pro bono work per invention. The 21st Annual Foundation Awards Dinner raised more than $43,000. From the proceeds of this event, we awarded $6,300 in scholarships. Patrick Healy, NBC Channel 4 news reporter, was our keynote speaker, and three city officials were auctioned off to raise money for scholarships, the mayor of Irvine, the city manager, and the police chief. Four individuals were honored that evening. Howard Klein, Fon Tandra Verdi, EOPS counselor, and also Raymond Lee- and also Raymond Lee and Jeffrey Joy from Greenberg Trial Rig. More than $137,000 was awarded at this year's Scholarship Award Ceremony on May the 14th. Our foundation also awarded an additional $63,000 in scholarships during the 2008-2009 academic year. The OSHA Scholarship Matching Program. IVC became the first community college in California to take advantage of the $25 million in matching funds provided by the OSHA Foundation. $89,500 has been raised to date as part of a three-year campaign to establish new scholarship endowments. The money raised will receive a 50% match from the Bernard OSHA Foundation, thereby creating a total of $134,250 in new endowments that will provide annual scholarships in perpetuity to assist low-income students. Two longtime employees, Steve and Joni Woodard, establish a $7,000 endowment in loving memory of their family. Joni, who is Steve's mother, worked at IVC for many years and is now retired. Steve has worked in the Facilities and Maintenance Department at IVC for the past 17 years. Charter 100, a philanthropic women's community organization, presented a $21,000 gift to establish a new endowment. To date, Charter 100 has donated over $200,000 to benefit low-income students at IVC. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Trustee Marcia Milczek for her involvement with Charter 100. Or should I say gracias? Our foundation also received an anonymous $50,000 gift to support IVC's Win Symphony. This is the sixth year in a row that IVC has received this donation for this generous amount. A portion of this donation was placed in the Symphony's endowment account, which now has a principal balance of over $200,000. The volunteers of Irvine Regional Hospital and Medical Center donated $10,000 in scholarships to IVC students who are pursuing a career in health care. Saddleback Kiwanis awarded $8,000 in scholarships to IVC students. And Grainger, a Fortune 500 company, made a gift of $5,000, which will be used to provide scholarships for electronic technology students. And last but not least, AT&amp;T donated $9,000 to IVC. In the previous year, AT&amp;T made a similar contribution. And now, I would like to call forward David Robinson, the Chairman of our foundation.
Chairman Mather, President Wagner, and trustees, it's truly an honor to be with you tonight. I want to just tell you that we're really excited down in Irvine, and we're excited because we have a truly energized board. What they all recognize is there's a wellspring of support for the community colleges in the state, and in particular, for the two magnificent flagship community colleges that are the South County Community College District, and we intend unfailly tapping into that. In fact, that is our initiative this year. The number-one thing that we want to do, and our number-one agenda item, is to strengthen the foundation's relationship with the community and specific community groups, to identify groups that would have synergistic relationships with the community college, and to, in fact, then more efficiently exploit the opportunities, the manifold opportunities that exist, to connect the community with the wonderful offerings that, through your fine efforts and the faculty, exist. In that regard, one of our other agendas is to establish, as I see our sister campus and foundation has already admirably established, an advisory board. That is all, I'm very pleased to announce, is already well underway. In fact, we have a group that has not only put together guidelines, which are in the short strokes of being approved by the foundation board, but we've already reached out and identified a number of truly significant community leaders who've already expressed interest, and we believe that that will snowball once that is launched. So, in addition to establishing an advisory council, oh, those are plans here. In addition to doing that, we've taken assessment of what we've done in the past, and we feel that we can do it better. One of the things that we and all charitable organizations attempt to do is raise money through special events. We feel that taking assessment of the special events and incorporating them as part of a strategic plan is really essential to our success and our future growth. So, we are, in fact, reassessing and revising and streamlining those special events so that they, in fact, comport with a strategic plan which is already underway. In that regard, I hope you attend IVC's first annual casino night at our theater, Cubbing Sue. We're also building relations between the faculty, the students, the community, and our own board members. And in that, we're going to be kicking it off with a retreat, a first-class retreat at the Boy Scouts, not yet officially opened, but soon to be officially opened, facility just above Irvine Regional Park, the Outdoor Education Center. You'll be hearing a lot about this in the news in the near future. In fact, I'm proud to be affiliated on the, as one of the officers of the Orange County Council of the Boy Scouts. So, in addition to the Boy Scouts supporting IVC, I'm also proud to say that IVC is part of our strategic alliance program, is supporting the Boy Scouts. So, in that regard, again, what comes around goes around, but this will be a fantastic opportunity for a lot of people who haven't yet met IVC, haven't yet met California's community college system, haven't yet met the folks in this room who already understand the mission, to understand the mission. And once we have established that friend building, we will have gone a long ways towards the fundraising that's necessary to accomplish our goals. So, in short, those are our goals, and I am very pleased to tell you that we also expect in the next month and a half to be expanding our board by approximately 30%. Thank you very much. Any questions? Be happy to respond.
Dr. Peoples cannot be with us this evening. He would like you to know that ATEP also has a foundation. There's been quite a bit of activity in that recently. They've, in July 15th, they elected new directors, new officers. They are currently setting goals and direction. They expect to increase their activity as ATEP grows, and that currently stands, this will come on. Okay, there we go. The balance currently stands at $10,269. So, are there any questions about ATEP?
Trustee Milczek.
I actually wasn't even aware ATEP had a foundation. So, when was the ATEP Foundation initiated or inaugurated?
In 2005. It is young.
Oh, it's a young organization. Okay, well, great. That's, so, and you're putting together the Board of Directors right now, is that what?
Yes, in fact, it was about a week ago that they had their Board of Directors, their slate of directors, July 15th. And so, they are now in place and setting goals and direction for the coming year with the expectation that they're going to be able to increase the activity, and it will grow as ATEP grows.
Okay, well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? All right. Thank you to all the presenters. Very much appreciate that. And we will now move to our next presentation, the My Academic Plan presentation. And Dr. Bemici, you've got the floor again.
Thank you. Foremost, we developed My Academic Plan, our MAP, to benefit our district's students. However, no sooner had we begun to tell other people about it than institutions started to approach us, asking if they could license the MAP software. Now, recently, this board approved the investigation of possible partnerships regarding MAP and other software created in the district. But that begs the question, what is MAP? And so, at your request tonight, Associate IT Director Jim Gaston is here to demonstrate My Academic Plan and its connections to our student information system. So, Jim?
Let me give you just a little background information about MAP and what we set out to do. So, what we set out to do was to provide a system that would allow our students to create a tracking mechanism, to see how they were doing and achieving their goals. This system was really driven by our counselors. The counselors approached us in District IT, said they had reviewed the available systems out there, and they really felt that they were lacking, and so they thought we could build something better. So, this is what we set out to do. The goals were to create a guide that could help the students figure out what their goals were, show them which courses they should take to achieve those goals, and then give them the ability to track how they're doing in achieving those goals. So, we created a design team that's comprised of counselors, students, and articulation staff, and we began real serious development in this in late 2005, and it went online just a little over two years ago in April of 2007. And one of the things I really need to emphasize in this is the team of people that were involved here. I've worked in this district a really long time. I've worked with a number of teams that were very talented. I've never seen a group so dedicated to the success of the system and who kept the focus on the students and kept it really student-centric. They're not all represented here, but I really need to mention them. From Saddleback, we had David Francisco, Steve Handa, Becky Aguilar, Bob Froelich, and Gary Staken. From IVC, we had Tiffany Tran, Fontan Riverdi, Yolanda Goldsmith. We had two students, Mai Din and Hillary Kovash. Mai actually kept coming to our design meetings after she transferred to Cal State Fullerton just because she wanted to see it through to completion. And from the district, we had Pratik Modi, Sean Colette, Ted Leith, and Raul Gutierrez. So, they really did a phenomenal job. And as you can see by this, we've received a state award for MAP. As Bob mentioned, we've received recognition from other districts. But what really matters to us is this slide, because this shows that our students are really taking to this. It's been out there for not, just a little over two years, and we're approaching 50,000 plans that have been created inside of MAP. And that lets us know that we really hit exactly what we meant to do, which is provide a service that our students would really use. So, at this point, what I want to do is just go into a demonstration of MAP. And what I've done is, I've actually created a video of it that I'm going to do for a couple of reasons. One is, I get really excited about MAP, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, I'm a geek and I have no life, which is the primary reason. But the other is that we really feel like this provides a really unique service for our students. And so, when I give demonstrations of this at conferences and other colleges, it usually takes me about an hour to get through the entire thing. I suspect you don't want me to take quite that much time, and so what's nice about the video clip is that it will constrain me just to give you an overview of it. So, I'm not going to get into the details of it, but hopefully you'll get a real flavor for how this is working. So, MAP is delivered through my site, like all of our services provided to students. So, to get to it, you simply log in to my site. In the left navigation column, there's a link that says My Academic Plan. They go in, and the first page is an overview. Now, given the YouTube generation that we're trying to reach, rather than have lengthy text on this page, we have a video comes up. Yes? No, is it smaller on your screens?
It does pull up on the screen.
Okay, yeah, I think that's the best I'm going to be able to do. Sorry about that. So, rather than have a bunch of text there that we know most people won't read, we actually shot videos of our counselors describing, there's no audio to this, by the way, so don't worry if that's not coming through. We shot some videos of our counselors explaining how to use MAP, and so we have those sprinkled throughout MAP so that people can actually hear from the counselors who designed it. When it first goes in, there's a disclaimer on the page that just encourages students to actually come in and talk to a counselor. And the first thing we do is we ask, what is your goal? Is it a certificate? Is it an associate's degree? Or is it transfer? I'm going to go into transfer because that's the most complicated. Do you want to go to CSU, UC? Do you want to keep your options open? Do you want to go to private? Or I'm not sure. In this case, I'm going to go ahead and pick a UC plan. We can choose either of our two colleges as the source college. We can choose which one to transfer to, and then we can pick the major at that institution. And all this data comes to us from an external source called Project Assist so that we don't have to maintain all of that. It's done automatically. And that's all the student has to do. And now, they're going to go into the planning tool itself that will tell them which courses they can take in order to achieve the goal that's been presented to them. This is the kind of thing that you and I did by sifting through the course catalog. Now, I'm going to switch over to Saddleback so that I give both our colleges equal billing in here. And I'm going to pull up a plan that I already created so that you can see one that's already baked. As you can see, students can create as many plans as they want, so that if they want to have a transfer plan but also have an associate's and certificates, it'll do that. Every time they pull up the plan, it'll reevaluate their transcript and show them which courses they've successfully completed. A transfer plan is the most complicated. It has general education, has major preparation courses, electives, and then prereqs and co-reqs. We're going to go in and take a look. In this case, you can see that there are six areas in the Agnesi general education pattern. We've highlighted Area 1 because this student is missing a few units. So, we're going to expand this out now, and we'll see each course that they could take to fulfill the requirements of that area represented by a little button. If they hover the mouse over the button, information pops up directly out of our course catalog that gives the catalog description, the number of units, if it has any prereqs or co-reqs. If they see that that's the course they want, all they have to do is click on the button, and here's where we can really start personalizing this information. In this case, English 1A has a prerequisite. This student hasn't met the prerequisite, so it automatically adds the prerequisite to their plan. That course has additional prerequisites for which there are options, and now the student can pick that. So, rather than just going from a generic cookie cutter plan that all students see the exact same information, we're giving the student personalized, very specific advice on exactly which courses they're going to need to take to be able to achieve the goals that they're looking for. And again, this is the kind of thing that you and I probably did by flipping through a course catalog, and we simply don't have the number of counselors to be able to advise every single student, so MAP allows them to do that. So, now we've set up, imagine, I've spent a lot more time in here, I've added all the courses I need in my plan. Now, it's going to let me go to the next page, which is going to let me set up a rough timeline of when I want to take these courses. So, I set my target completion date, and now I have a pool of courses to choose from. These are the individual courses that I said I wanted. If I see that I want to add that anthropology course to Spring 10, I simply select Spring 10, click on the course, and now that's been added over there into the timeline, as you can see. Now, that really is MAP in a nutshell. I mean, it does far more than this, but for the time I have tonight, that's really what MAP allows us to do. As you can see, I start off with very general requirements. I now have a list of courses that I know will help me achieve my goal, and I've laid them out in a rough timeline. Now, what I'd like to do is show you, I'm going to actually take you through the process and show you how we take a student now from this general information specifically down to the point of enrolling in classes, finding out where that class meets, and actually buying the books. If you notice, Follow 9 has a little search icon next to it because the Follow 9 schedule is online. If I click on that, we're going to show the student a personalized view of the class schedule. So, we've gone out now and searched specifically for those classes that the students said they wanted to take, and we've presented that to them, showing them all the section offerings. I can now browse through this. Here's a course that caught my eye. I've heard this Larry Perez guy is a pretty good teacher. So, I click on his faculty profile icon, and here's information that he's entered into the system to describe himself to his students. If I want to see where the class meets, I click on the room, and a campus map appears with an arrow pointing specifically to the building that class meets in. If I want some more details about the class, I click on the Details link. I can see the course catalog, I can see the class status, how many seats are remaining, and a list of deadline dates for this class. If I click on the Reminder icon next to the date, I can request that an email be sent to me in some time period prior to this date so that I can be aware of that deadline before it shows up. Yes, Trustee Milczek?
Where does it show how many seats are remaining in the class?
On the Details page. There's a couple of different places.
Number there, and that shows, and that's, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, had to interrupt you.
Yeah, and I'll actually show you in just a minute how they can even get even more personalized information for that. So, and again, if I'm going too fast, please stop me with questions. I was just trying to just give you a quick overview here. Now, notice there's also a button there for Add to Cart. So, if this is the class I want, I click on it, and now I have a personalized list of sections that I'm interested in. This is kind of my wish list. So, I can take a look at this. I can click on a pre-registration check, and I can find out if there's any issues with me taking these classes. So, even prior to my appointment time arriving, I can find out if I haven't met a prereq, if I have a time conflict checking, if I'm missing a co-rec, the kinds of things that cause a student to get really stressed when they're actually in their registration appointment window. We're also going to display the classes for them in a daytime grid. This is the thing you and I did on a napkin or on a piece of graph paper, so I can actually see this. And down here at the bottom, this is where it really gets cool. They can request that an email be sent to them every day with a list of classes in their cart, the current class status, and how many seats are left in it. cart, the current class status, and how many seats are left in it. So, every day, they can get a daily status report of the classes in their cart, and then if any class is closed, they can actually go make those adjustments before their appointment time even arrives. Or if they're really tech savvy, they can subscribe to a personalized RSS feed that's updated every half hour. And this can actually, there's a number of devices that can read RSS feeds, including mobile devices. So, now that I've seen these are the classes I want, I'm going to click on another button. I'm going to go right back into my site, right into registration. So, now, these are the classes in my cart, but I'm not actually enrolled in them yet. These are just classes I've said I'm interested in. I'm going to click on the button. Every semester, we ask a student to update their demographic information, so their phone number, their address. They can also forward their college email address to their own personal address right on this page. The system saw that I have four classes in my cart, so it's going to verify those with me to make sure these are the classes I really want to enroll in. And just by clicking on one button, I just enrolled in those four classes without having to type anything else, without having to do any more research. If I know the ticket number of additional classes I want to add, I can type those right there in that box. Or if I want to do a search, I can just go to the search box and type in any topic. In this case, I'm going to type in art history. And it's going to go out and do a search right now, just like Google would, and show me classes that have the words "art history" anywhere in the title or the description. If I want to, I can add right from this page. In this case, I'm just going to stick with the four classes in my cart. I move on to the next page, and this is going to give me a summary of what these classes are going to cost me. I can drill down in to get a little more detail. In this case, Accounting 1A has a material fee, so I can see exactly what I'm being charged. I click on the next page, and now I can pay for these. I can do it with a credit card, pay right now, or in this case, I'm going to choose to pay by check, and it'll give me some instructions on how to send that in. I click on complete registration, and just like that, I'm now enrolled in the classes. And you can see where I drill down from very general information to very specific. Lastly, I can come down here to the next steps. I can purchase my parking pass online. I don't need to come in and stand in a line. This is really cool. If I come in here and click on this link, it goes to our online bookstore operated by a separate vendor. This isn't our system. We preload the cart with the books that are required or optional just for the classes that they're enrolled in. From here, they can pay for the books. They can be shipped directly to their door, just like Amazon, or they can be bundled up in the on-campus bookstore, and students can come pick them up. Lastly, I click on "View Current Class Schedule." I'm going to come back into my site and see the classes that I'm enrolled in. And I, from here, I can change my option for letter grade to pass, no pass, or I can drop the class from here if I've changed my mind. Or what's really cool is if I just click on the location, a Google Maps satellite image appears with a balloon pointing to the building that class is in, listing all of the sections in the class that I'm taking in that specific building. In the next version of this, we're going to ask all students to install a GPS chip in their neck. And then, we can actually guide them directly in turn-by-turn directions. Dr. Brumucci said that might be illegal, but I think we can probably get around that. So, that, again, is very, very high level. A large number of people, both in District IT, admissions, Fiscal Bursar's Office, a number of people have worked really hard on developing these services for our student. And if you can compare it to what we went through when we were in college, I think we're really delivering some pretty phenomenal services to our students that a lot of colleges are not able to match. So, with that, I'll hand it back over to Dr. Brumucci, and he's going to wrap it up.
So, what's next for MAP and CIST? Well, in a word, we want to make these systems smarter. We want to add even more personalization to them. We know that students aren't alike. They're individuals. They have different goals. The project that we have codenamed tentatively Sherpa will personalize both MAP and CIST to the unique needs of every student. For example, this mock-up shows what happened. Now, currently, if a class is closed, it just tells you, "That class is closed." What we want is for Sherpa able to learn what was most important to each and every individual student about that class. Why did you want that class? I mean, was it the instructor? Was it the time that it met? Was it that it met certain goals in your MAP plan? What was it? And so, once it knows, it can then use that criteria to help you find another class. Now, how will we know what students want from a system like that? From the students themselves, because we do what's called user experience engineering. That combines various research methods, ranging from surveys, focus groups, usability testing, software web analytics, all to help us know and understand what works and is going to be intuitive and easy to use. Now, this slide shows Maray Software, which is the software we use for usability testing. It has cameras both on either the computer screen, or in this case, the student is using a paper prototype. Before you even start building computer mock-ups, you can do it with paper. So, you can get both their actions and their reactions to what's going on. So, that's what we're excited about doing, what's coming up. You know, we're very proud of the district and college team that has helped us create MAP, and we hope to be even more proud of what's to come. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Number of trustees wishing to ask questions or comment? Let me start with Trustee Williams.
Well, I would just mention that the MAP program was an award winner at the Futures Assembly in January, last January, in Orlando. Chancellor Mather and I were there, as well as Jim came and gave a wonderful presentation. The category, Chancellor, was it under educational technology in that area? One of the top 10 in the nation of all the nominees submitted. We didn't win the top prize, but there was a great deal of interest at our presentation. And Jim did a wonderful job. He was jet lagging, but he did a great job. Great job. So, it's just phenomenal. But, you know, I have to laugh, because I enrolled in Saddleback 40 years ago this summer. I came down here in the summer of '69, and you still have classes with ticket numbers. But I remember getting the tickets going through the registration line, and if you didn't have the ticket, you didn't get in the class. But anyway, good job.
Trustee Padberg.
Yeah, I think if you don't have that experience of having to stand in long lines to register, you can't really appreciate all of this. But it's great. I didn't see, when you were doing the demonstration, anything that would pull out online classes. If someone wanted to do everything online, how would that show up in the whole process?
Yeah, right now, they can do that in the online class schedule. There's an advanced search feature, and one of the options there is the location of the class, and they can choose distance add only and then filter it that way. But as Dr. Brumucci mentioned, one of the things we want to be able to do is start actually detecting patterns in the students' choices that they've made and then be able to make recommendations similar to what happens in Amazon or Netflix or systems like that. So, if we see that a student has taken lots of distance education classes before, then we can tailor-make some recommendations for them on courses they might be interested in the future.
Thank you. Chancellor.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor Brumucci and Jim Gaston, thank you for a great presentation. You can see members of the board and the public as to why both of these gentlemen are in such high demand for invitation to serve as keynote speakers, not only statewide but also nationwide. And MAP is indeed in demand by other colleges as more and more colleges learn about it nationally. And this is why we received a grant in the past year from the State Chancellor's office to see how we can make MAP available to all the community colleges. And we have been visited by other colleges from time to time. This particular software, as well as some other student information system softwares, are so much in demand. That is why we appreciate board support for us to explore as to how we can market it. Remember, this product was developed first and foremost to serve or meet the educational needs of our own students. And now that it is in demand, Vice Chancellor Brumucci has been invited to meet with the executives of Microsoft, Blackboard, and Banner, for example, to see how we can market this product. We're hoping that some of the money that can be generated can be used to do some other new and innovative creative stuff in the IT department and to release perhaps some of the funding that the district has been providing them and use it elsewhere. I can't thank enough both of you and the entire IT team. Thank you very much.
Trustee Milchiker.
Two things. First of all, I wanted to thank Foundation Director Altelo. I had my button pushed, but you didn't say it. That's fine. But you did a fine job, too, and your foundation has done a fabulous job this year, too. So, didn't want that to get by. I'm glad you're still here to hear that, okay? I think that this team is just extraordinary. It's been good for a long time. I know, I just, this morning, I just looked, went to my site, and I was able to see that I started taking classes at Saddleback College in 1981, and I stopped in 1987 and '88. And I, I'm sorry. It was 2008. That was the last year I took a class. And it tells you when you got your degree, what your GPA is every semester, calculates your GPA all the time, and it's just incredible. I have several questions. One of the questions is, if it's looking for a class, will it find a class at IVC also that, or from Saddleback College to IVC, or IVC to Saddleback College? Because these are both colleges, sister colleges in our district, and we certainly wouldn't want to lose these students if there isn't a class available at that college. So, that's one question, and that's okay. You can just answer that question. Thank you.
Yeah, and again, the advanced search capability in the online class schedule does allow you to search either of the college online class schedules. MAP itself is designed to be very college-centric, primarily because the articulation agreements between the transfer institutions are specific to the college.
Oh, I see.
And so, the articulation agreements are tied to the specific college catalog. But what MAP does allow you to do is actually put in courses you've taken at other institutions, not just our sister institution within the district, but anywhere in the state. We actually have every single transferable course offered at every single community college in the state already in the MAP database. And if they bring in a paper transcript, a counselor can go in, mark those courses having been taken, and MAP knows where that course gets transfer credit to, in the semester they took it, at the place they took it. And again, that's an enormous resource that other systems don't offer.
That really is, because I know that I have taken, many years ago, a class in property management at Orange Coast College, and I took trigonometry and calculus at some of the other community colleges in Long Beach. But you have to get the paper transcript from those schools and turn it in here, or will your search engine find it in the other college? They can't search the other colleges' database, can they?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
The state has something called CCC Tran, which is a statewide transcript system. And one of the things we want to do, if we can get some additional funding to enhance MAP, we could actually tie that into CCC Tran. A student could go into CCC Tran and release their information to us. We'd have to have their permission. But if we did that, then MAP could automatically pull up their external transcripts as well as their internal.
That would be helpful, because there are times that you sometimes don't recall where you took classes or when.
Right.
And if it could just pull it up from all the community colleges, all the classes you took, I think that would be really extraordinary. But this is really fun stuff, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Trustee Padberg.
Well, I don't recall your seeing of it. It sounds like you've caught the attention of four-year colleges as well and that you're leader and on the cutting edge for them as well with this whole program. And that's just incredible. So, kudos.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. Appreciate it. We are to the consent calendar. Let me inquire of my colleagues, any items to pull from the consent calendar? Trustee Lang. 512, 513, and 520. Any others? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions matter carries unanimously. All right, item 512, pulled by Trustee Lang, and let's go there. Yes, sir. Mike.
This was an item that had to do with establishing a specific pool of different architects that I guess would, you know, essentially, we would go to automatically, as I understand it, for different kinds of projects. One philosophically, I guess, I, you know, I'm a little bit concerned about limiting the request for proposals, which I'm not sure if this would do or not. Perhaps somebody wants to address it. And ultimately, I'll probably recuse myself anyway, since there's one of the firms on here that I did receive a contribution from, TKK, so I don't feel independent about that. And the only reason I pulled 513, I might as well take those together if you don't mind, was because I just happened to notice that there was an architectural firm that wasn't even on this list that we're recommending for the next item that was on here. So, maybe somebody wants to comment about that.
Ms. Elena.
Hello. So, the architects that are proposed here for the pool are really more specific to kind of scheduled maintenance projects, anywhere up to $3 million. For instance, the roofing project that's happening on the BDS building over here at Saddleback might have been a project like that if it had needed architectural services. We're still fully capable of going out for RFPs on larger projects or projects that we feel might warrant a new selection process. This is primarily to address a concern that, over the years, we've selected from architects that we have experience with without ever being able to demonstrate we went through a selection process. So, we wanted to have that in our background.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a second? All right, moved in seconded. Let's vote on item 512 only. And a matter carries with one abstention and one absence. All right, and 513, anything additional to add? Trustee Lang?
Second.
All right, let's vote. And a matter carries again. And finally, 520, also pulled by Trustee Lang, the June and July contracts.
Right. Okay. And again, I'm going to abstain or recuse myself from this item as well.
All right, seeing no further discussion, let's vote. Matter carries. All right. Item 6.1, the James Beatt library renovation, and it's to hire a construction management firm. It's an item here for approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, discussion? Seeing no discussion, let's vote. And the matter carries unanimously with one absent. 6.2, award of bid, again here for approval, the Communication Arts Building W interior renovations. Moved. Is there a second? Moved in seconded. Discussion? Let's vote. Matter carries unanimously with one absent. Item 6.3, the 2019-10 childcare fee schedule.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.4, policy revisions, acceptance for review and study only.
Second.
Discussion on any of these items? Let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Slow down, it will be done before 8:00. 6.5, approval and ratification of academic personnel action items.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion? There are no changes, no. Nope, he said, I'm sorry, he said no changes. I didn't announce that. Trustee Milchiker.
I want to mention one of my former Spanish teachers, Ma Chambres, who is a fabulous Spanish teacher, is retiring, and so decided to bring that up. Thank you.
All right, let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. Matter carries unanimously. 6.6, approval, there is one change.
I'd like to remove item A1B from the agenda, please.
Remove approval as amended. Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Six.
Let's vote. And matter carries unanimously. 7.1, an information item, our basic aid report. Trustee Lang.
Just, I know, I just talked to the chancellor about this earlier, and that is that we do need to have this item updated, obviously, for new information as soon as we get that regarding basic aid future receipts, because I think the amounts that are presented here are overstated at this point.
Gary.
Yeah. You're probably referring to information we gave you in the tentative budget, I'm guessing. And we don't change this report for you with regard to what we're expecting this year until we close the books.
No, but what you do do is give us an estimate of future receipts. And we already know, I think, that the estimate of future receipts is going to be less than what's presented here, would be my point.
Right. And our practice has been, we don't change that until we adopt the final budget. So it's just, this has been our procedure all along. I think you, maybe you noticed it this year because of the, it was a rather big change. But it's, I mean, we can change it at any time, but this is just what we've always done.
Okay, my point is, is I think it's misleading to put information on here that we know is, you know, probably erroneous at this point. Be almost better not to have the item, as far as I'm concerned, if it doesn't have accurate information on it.
Chancellor.
Trustee Lang will change it. We'll make sure that we maintain it as the best information level that we can, based on the information we receive from the county. Thanks.
Further?
All right, 7.2, the facilities plan status report. Questions or comments? All right, seeing none. 7.3, our list of board requested reports. And we are to item eight, reports from our various front-table folk. President Burnett, we'll start with you.
Thank you again, Mr. President. First, I wanted to thank the board for joining in the journey, I'm sorry, in the memory of Flip Dar, beloved water polo and swim coach that passed away recently. I wanted to read, actually, a wonderful card that came from his wife, a sent to Saddleback, and says, "Thank you for the lovely arrangement sent from the Saddleback College family. It is rewarding to know that Flip is remembered by the friends he made in a place he loves so much. No one could have had a happier career. Sincerely, Miriam Dar." So just wanted to let you all know. Second, also very tragic, that one of our freshman students passed away, who also happened to be the son of, coincidentally, another swim team instructor here at Saddleback College. In fact, his memorial service is going on right now as we speak. So thank you once again for your thoughts on that. And with that said, as you know, we placed on your seats, handed out some good stuff already. It's fall. It's already the fall semester, it seems like tomorrow. We gave you the 0910 catalog, the fall schedule, and then our 0910 student handbook. So we thought you'd like that for some enjoyable reading. With that, I'd like to congratulate trustee Milchiker on being named a Saddleback Life member. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just wanted to let you know that, as you know, because of the financial situation, our college is working extremely hard with all of our folks, governance groups, and managers, and everybody else, in developing and dealing with the state and local fiscal situation. And we are very much hoping that a final budget is approved for this week, so we really can know specifically what we're dealing with. Finally, just want to, speaking of fall, the fall semester coming up, before next meeting, it's already in-service in Flex Week, and did want to, begins on Monday, August 17th. Wanted to invite you to a couple specific things. First would be the president's faculty breakfast and our president's classified luncheon, which is on the Wednesday following, day after, the chancellor's opening session. So we would love to have you come if you can. Anyway, have a wonderful summer.
Trustee Milchiker, you turned your light on, then you turned your light off. Last time you did that, I moved right on past your efforts to thank Altelo, because your light was off.
Sorry.
Your light's on and off. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to say two things.
Okay, say something.
Really quick things. I had Flip Dar for a swimming instructor before I was on the Board of Trustees, and it was many years ago, and he was a great instructor. It was really fun to take swimming here. And I just wanted to, well, that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, President Rockmore.
Okay, I'll let the bulk of my written report stand, but I would like to welcome Angela Mahaney here. You'll be meeting her in a little bit. She is our new classified senate president. Also, remind everybody, there is, we're very honored to host a chancellor's roundtable that will be at Irvine Valley College on July 30, at 11:30. Chancellor Scott will be there to address the group. And generally, those that do attend are trustees, chancellors, and presidents from the Orange County college districts. And also, the chancellor's roundtable is made up of donors who have contributed $15,000 or more per year to the California Community College Foundation. Just to let you know, I have the honor of chairing my first full accreditation visit to Folsom College. Be doing that in October. And I just found out today that I was appointed to the Economic and Workforce Development Committee of the American Association of Community Colleges. So as a result of that, I've also informed my family that I'll see them at the next spring thaw. Thank you.
President Gabriella.
Thank you very much. And just a congratulations to Glenn, very good job. And we're hoping that you will bring back everything from your accreditation visit to share with us. Just an update real quick, we have an annual July planning and budget retreat, and I want to thank Glenn and Devit. They did an excellent job in putting together all the material for that meeting, and Devit did a fabulous job in the middle of all of his budget preparation as well. We're still working on our accreditation. We have our introduction, which is giant, done in preliminary draft, and we're right now reviewing the preliminary draft of standard one. So we're making good progress even over the summer on accreditation. And thank you.
President Kuzroff.
Thank you. We also are working on accreditation. We had a steering committee meeting today. The four standards are moving along quickly. We're shooting for our first rough draft in early September. And a lot of this work will be done in the last Friday of in-service week. The faculty will be receiving from me an email and an announcement about augmenting what we heard earlier on the textbook issue. Some of my own students have told me that their parents have lost their jobs and they didn't have money. Several of us have actually bought books for our students. But I'm going to urge faculty members with the appropriate people in the library to have sufficient room to place text on there, so students can use those books and lab materials that would be available. A concern that I raised with the president, and I know that the district is working on it, but again, we all need to be conscious of it, what will happen if this swine flu thing takes off in the fall? How will this college, how our sister college also operate if the schools, as in New York City, were told to close? We do have Blackboard, we have email, we have other ways of doing this. We need to be thinking about this now, and I know some people are. In the fall term, we're going to have welcome gaucho week provided by our folks in Student Services, combined with, obviously, the first week of instruction. We're trying to meld that together to make a good impression on our students and to have a smooth operation. And finally, a change in our structure at Saddleback College in terms of one of our committees, from the PBC committee to Consultation Council, has been working very well, and I want to direct and thank the president for that. Also want to thank Rajan Verdian for the work that he's been doing with me on accreditation.
Thank you. And President Hagerty.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a note report tonight.
All right. Turn to the other end of the table, and a new face joining us, Ms. Andrews.
Hello. Delaney wasn't able to be here tonight, so I'm the ASG treasurer. I think you've all seen me before. I have a few things to report. We are, on Friday, going to UCLA as a retreat to view their ASG facilities, to get an idea as to how we can be more efficient this year. We're also serving on college-wide committees this summer and are planning to go into that bull force in the fall, serving on college-wide committees, including the accreditation committees. We are focusing our efforts on recruiting still. We almost have a full ASG roster, we're happy to see, but we're still going through some interviews, so that's kind of exciting. We're working on moving into our new space, which is just down the hall from our old one. And our old space will be used to accommodate the Veterans Affairs Office. And then finally, I know I mentioned to you guys previously in my budget presentation about a, something we spent money on last year, or in this previous budget, in order to create funds for this year, our fundraising card. And we just got them in, and we're selling them in our office for $10. And we're working on a fundraising plan that will benefit our campus-wide committees, our organizations as well, so our clubs and athletics will also benefit from selling these cards. And with your permission, President Wagner, could I approach you guys? And I have a small gift for each of you in the form of our cards. That's all right with you?
Certainly.
All right.
It's not a cookie, but it's all right. It's better than a cookie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Not him. It's safe with me. Thank you very much. And on behalf of Saddleback Classified, Mr. Hampton.
Good evening, and thank you for having me this evening. It's been a wonderful meeting, and so far, it's been nice and short. The Classified Senate at Saddleback College will be holding their annual retreat on August the 5th. We'll be looking back over last year, seeing what we need to take and continue to work on for this next year, and set our goals. And we are meeting on a semi-monthly schedule, so that we can stay in touch and keep up with any upcoming items that we need to take and work with the administration and the president during that time. We look forward to working with the Board of Trustees, the district, and all of the campuses of this fine organization. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On behalf of CSCA, Ms. Morehouse.
I don't have a report. CSCA doesn't have a report tonight. However, I do want to welcome our two new Classified Senate presidents. I'm really looking forward to working with both of them, with Russ at Saddleback and Angela at IVC. And we're going to have a good year and work really well together, and I'm really looking forward to having them here at the table with me.
All right. And let me welcome another new face at the front table, Ms. Mahaney, on behalf of the IVC Classified.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Dr. Rockmore, for introducing me. Again, my name is Angela Mahaney. I am really looking forward to being here. It is very exciting, and indeed a pleasure and an honor to represent the Classified staff at IVC. I am diligently working with Russ and Shanna to get aboard with all the rules and procedures and guidance, and obviously, working with all of you. We also have new officers for this year. We have Dennis Gordon as our president-elect, Jose Juan as our secretary, and Diana Walker as our treasurer. We have our first meeting next week, Wednesday, the 29th. We are holding our meetings at lunchtime for about an hour, and we are setting our goals in our committees, and the timing of the committees, et cetera, details to be distributed at our college council for information for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all, ladies and gentlemen. We stand adjourned in memory of Pat Moore and Professor Flip Dar. Thank you.[1764.66]